All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Before we start with the pledge, we have a student like we normally do for our board meetings. Tonight, we have Jalise Anderson. She's a freshman at Fremont Ross. She's the daughter of Barry Anderson and our own Sarah Lewis. So don't hold anything against her. Feel nervous there. So if we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance, Jalise will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom, here. Ms. Lehman.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Nally.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting from March 24th, 2025, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thinking by Ms. Lehman. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom, yes. Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved. Moving on to legislative report.
Ah, yes. Wanted to mention, if you go to the OSBA site, there's a, next Tuesday at noon, there's an understanding HB 96, House version of the biennial budget, and that's a webinar, and it's free for us to sign up. So I would, if you're available, I would just highly recommend that so that we, you know, continue to keep, you know, keep awareness there. Also, with that said, the, I would encourage, and I'll probably say it again later, to not hesitate to contact our legislators, and I would invite the public that are watching and here to make those contacts, to educate yourself on what's going on. I think there's a very competitive time going on for all the dollars. And I think there's, you know, obviously, as I mentioned at previous meetings, there's that, how do we reduce taxes in a number of different areas? And, and I think doing that makes less money available. And what's scary is, you know, it can throw it back to our local communities in the form of property taxes and, and whatever those options are. And right now, you know, there's, there's that challenge of everybody's kind of exhausted from all the things that are being thrown at them, whether it's state or federal. So, but just encourage, also for us as board members, I would just encourage on the OSBA site, if you go to the advocacy section, some of the, the information that I share with you at meetings is, is in there. If you go to the advocacy section, there's, under legislative, there's facts, the facts that I share with you, and also sometimes I think when I share that information, it'll say if you want to read more, well, because I'm forwarding into you, it won't, may not allow you to make that direct connection. So if you go to the OSBA site and go to facts or legislative area, you can read more about that particular area. The information that I was going to send to you, and I'll, I guess, do it when I get home. I, I put the email together, but something just wasn't clicking on my computer, so I'll send that to you later. But what I did is put on there the legislative report, more, more dealing with the Senate Education Committee bill, the bills that are coming up. You know, there's some real concerns, and that's where I think people need to share. The, with the House passing their version of the budget as they would like to see it, and now is going on to the Senate, they've received it. They're on a break, and I think they come back, I believe it's the April 28th, the week of April 28th. They'll be having a lot of their hearings on different issues. And so like I said, I was highlighting the Senate section because that's kind of that next key step. However, don't hesitate to continue to talk to our House Representative, Mr. Click. I, I think he needs to know where we're coming from, and I think, you know, our administration, you know, has shared with the various legislators kind of some feelings from our district already. But with that said, there's one Senate Bill 7 that's being proposed, talks about K through 12 students providing annual instruction to K through 12 students on the effects of short-term chronic substance abuse, also dealing with various illegal drugs and how to respond, and then also a little bit of including there the bullying and hazing curriculum. And so that's one area. There's another area that talks, and it's really interesting because in some of the opening comments, it, it talks about that we, that the local power that we have to kind of determine what is presented to the students and what is taught. But then we go into, like this one Senate bill would require that districts develop mathematic improvement and monitoring plans. Well, you know, that all sounds good. But then we're in a situation where if, if it says, the way they're proposing it, if a seventh grader was to be scored, accomplished, or advanced, they would be required to take Algebra I. And and I'm not sure that, that that's good for all of our students, even if they're good with math, you know, in terms of making those choices, working with the parents, working with our administration. You know, I, I, I won't digress into my experiences. And then the, the one that really concerns me is, and it, and it kind of goes back to kind of throwing some of the religion into our schools, and that is talking about the founding documents. For example, they're encouraging that we have visible in our buildings, and they don't, they don't say specifically how, you know, we have a nice presentation of our Constitution and some of those things on the wall just down the hall. And it's a nice, it's a nice presentation, and I think it's important. But they also try to include in here, in, in those founding documents, the Mayflower Compact, the Declaration of Independence, the Ten Commandments, which, you know, that was a big issue. I think that the, the big push happened down in Louisiana, where they now have the Ten Commandments posted in a lot of the schools. And I'm not sure exactly how that bill's laid out, but I think Ohio's kind of picking up from that. The Magna Carta, Bill of Rights, the U.S. Constitution, and the Articles of Confederation. And, you know, so I, I'm hoping that between the Senate having discussions on this, and, and then when they go to reconciliation with the House, that, that they pare this down, if, if it's going to pass, to really what, I want to say this, it's called a founding document, but in the founding documents, they talk about the mottos of the United States and Ohio being posted. That's fine, but those weren't founding documents. Those were, I read where both of those were really developed back in the 1950s. And, you know, so that, so I'm just a little bit concerned in terms of kind of the push there from the Senate.
Really interesting what, what we want to put on display versus what we don't want to talk about. I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is hot button ignited. It's, it's just very interesting what what parts of history, because these are all historic documents, but parts of history we want to highlight, which maybe should be highlighted, but also what portions of history we want to eliminate. I just think that's very interesting. We dare not tell the story of Ruby Bridges, but let us put the Mayflower Compact on the
Right.
Interesting steps down.
No, and I think that's kind of what concerned me was, one, what was included, but also what is not included. And so I, you know, I, I think if you have input, you know, please share that with our State Senator Reinicki. I think he's on that, on one of those committees, and you know, so, so, you know, please, please make those contacts. And I think that's all I had. I don't know if anybody had any other comments about that. But that's, that's all I had, Tom.
Thank you. Sorry. Call me the I get a pay raise for that. So, all right, thanks, Tom. Moving on, no walk-on items? All right. Next is the community portion. If anyone would like to address the board, they can come up to the podium. So, okay. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of highlights this evening. One thing that I'm very thankful for, on behalf of our entire community, and previous board approval and action, on Friday, I believe it was, we had our four new buses arrive in the district. And they spent most of Friday getting through inspections and making sure everything was ready to go. And there were a lot of hands on deck to pull that off and make that happen. But those four beautiful buses were ready to go at the end of the, the school day for that first dismissal, and just fabulous, beautiful additions to our fleet. If you remember correctly, those replaced buses, in order to utilize those grant funds and be able to move in that direction, we had to eliminate some buses from our fleet that were no longer in, in strong working condition. So this definitely moves us forward. But I just wanted to update you and the entire community to let you know that they're here. And so you'll see some shiny new buses in our community. It's a wonderful addition.
We have memorial services for the old rickety floorboards rusting out and everything else. It was kind of light a match and
Moving on.
I don't think people realize the buses that are being set aside, what type of miles are on those. I, I'm looking back at Tom, do you, I mean, there's hundred, hundreds of thousands.
Hundreds of thousands.
Miles and the age is some of the buses, two of the buses were upwards of 20 years old. So, and honestly, two of them wouldn't even run to the scrapyard. They were towed to the scrapyard. So, yeah.
I did see that picture. I didn't realize that's probably what it was, was
Yep, beautiful. Yes.
Yeah. Oh, I mean, just, just being able to maintain those and keep those on the road, you know, is definitely a chore. And
Absolutely.
Looking and finding that replacement for Mr. Warren is going to be critical.
Yes, very much so. And we have, we have excellent people in there. And like Mr. Anway just commented that we, some of our buses are that old. And you're right, Mr. Nally, the fact that we have individuals on our staff that are able to continue to tweak and, and keep them afloat and keep us running, that's fantastic. But they do meet their limit. And so we're very fortunate to be able to have utilized some of those dollars earlier this year and be able to make those purchases. So I just want to do it, our entire community to know that.
They have to draw straws for who gets to drive the new buses?
I'm sure that's a big part of the conversation. I also just wanted to give a little shout out and make sure that our community knows that we are working on a summer feeding plan. We're pulling together all of those details, but it is our intention, on behalf of the district, to be able to provide a weekly meal distribution again this summer. It will run very similar to what we've had in the past. It will be on a Monday. It'll be a drive-through option back behind the middle school, high school area. And once again, that will be five breakfasts, five lunches, produce, as well as a gallon of milk for each of our families that qualify and drive, come through that area. So that is a community-based, that anyone has the option to participate in that. And our staff just really pulls that together and makes sure that that's a wonderful offering for our families and our community. So we will be getting more information out as we finalize those details. And, but I, I do know that we are starting to hear a little bit of buzz about summer and spring and all of these things that are coming. So I know families will start to wonder. I wanted to give them. And then lastly, just an FYI, that I will be in Columbus tomorrow with some of our art students that I, Mr. Norris and I are taking six of our high school art students who have been invited to present their artwork in the atrium of the State House. Two individuals across the entire state will be in their audience. So this is a fantastic opportunity for our students to use their voice to communicate with others in, with their anti-vaping message. And just a wonderful conglomerate collaborative opportunity between Fremont City Schools and Sanacy County Health Department. So there, there will be an article in the paper that has come up, and we will be off tomorrow to represent Fremont City Schools very proudly in Columbus.
Awesome.
Very nice.
I remember seeing that art exhibit. It was at the Y for their event. Really cool. And then Jamie Belcher from the Health Department saw me and said, hey, someone on the panel asked if our students could come down for this thing, and they're actually, so they're actually going to be on the panel. So they'll be part of the discussion of this whole thing. So it, it's pretty cool that our students get to go do that and, and show what they've done. So
Absolutely. We practiced last week. They have a full slideshow presentation that they will be giving in the atrium, and then they will be able to also step back and be part of that panel. And individuals from the audience will be able to go past and engage our kids and talk to them about their art and where they got their inspiration and really, really just a wonderful opportunity for, for our high school students. So I'm very proud and happy to be able to accompany them to Columbus tomorrow.
Nice.
Yes. All right. And that is all I have for this evening. If I could continue, Mr. Price?
Yep.
Wonderful. Thank you. Item number one, I would ask that you consider the approval of donations, and one that I would, we have several, and we have very generous community as always. One that I would really just like to point out is the Genite Company that is about midway on that list. That $500 donation comes from the company that was part of our tennis courts project that we had back the end of last year, finished up over the summer, and we were ready to go for fall season. The company did very well, and they were very appreciative of our opportunity for them to work within our community and in our district and gave back. And I just think that that's worth a shout out. So with that, if you would please approve those items.
Can I get a motion to approve item one, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thinking by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you.
You did.
It's been all over it.
Item number two is a, an agreement with A and G Educational Services. This is a renewal agreement. This is not new. This is for our students that attend our LEAP program. We provide some alternative education programming for some of our students. This allows them to best meet their needs, whether those be some emotional needs or some behavioral needs as well as their educational needs. So it's an awesome opportunity and just extends their, their education a little bit farther than the doors of Fremont City Schools.
Can I get a motion to approve item two, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thinking by Ms. Lehman. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number three, I would ask that you grant a high school diploma to Ms. Christina McCoy. She has met all of her requirements.
Can I have a motion to approve item three, please? Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thinking by Ms. Lehman. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number four begins some personnel issues. We do have some resignations there, all for a variety of reasons. But a couple of those individuals are leaving Fremont City Schools to, for new options for themselves, sometimes closer to home, sometimes in advancement. So we wish all of our staff members that are be resigning the best. Item number five is a termination notice that we would like to move forward on. Item number six, we have some appointments. We have some certified staff substitutes, and Mr. Anstead will be joining us at Ross High School. We also have some sort of support staff substitutes. We're happy with that. Item number seven brings us some fill positions for next year. So very excited. Actually, all three of those will be at Ross High School for next year. We have two science teachers and a high school counselor. So we're very happy to be early in the spring and be able to start filling some of those. And this will end with item number eight. We just have some supplemental contracts. And those two academic advisors, just a reminder that that is what we have, you have previously approved for the idea that we support our student athletes and our students that are involved in some of our extracurriculars and might need a little extra academic assistance. Those two head that up for us.
Can I have a motion to approve items four through eight, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number nine, we have Robin Moore, who is coming back again next year for us to run the concession stand as the manager and for all of that. So that is fall, winter, and spring for next school year. We also have item number 10, a bus chaperone. Mr. Finley is willing to assist us and travel with us.
Can I have a motion to approve items nine and 10, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thinking by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Robin Moore. What would we do without Robin Moore? Robin Moore, you can never retire. Putting you on notice as of right now. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Report of the Treasure.
Good evening. Last week, I had the fun time of going down to Columbus for the annual OASBO conference and school business officials. It's a very concentrated in the treasures department side of things. It's such a great learning experience for the treasures, and we will all be so proud to hear. I even talked to some people that I didn't know. I know that's my favorite thing, too. And it was, it was a great time for that learning, but also it was one of those where there were so many really good sessions down there. There's just so much going on in school finance between the legislation coming up, school funding changes. Everybody was just, there were sessions you couldn't even get into just because it was overwhelming. Luckily, this organization also does different professional development throughout the year, and some of those hotter items will be presented on a little bit later. The school funding right now is just really, with that budget bill coming up, a very hot topic, they will continue to report on that. I get weekly emails updating what's going on with it. As you've heard, there's changes every time we turn around. So what actually gets signed into place could be vastly different than what we're hearing right now. So there's also some audit changes going on. They updated our universal accounting system manual. And so that was fun to hear, and you're going to all be shocked. There was inconsistencies to what the new state funding is talking about versus what the auditor state would like to go on. So it's going to be fun.
Confusion in Columbus? No. I don't believe it.
I know. Those will be some fun issues to get to see worked out over the coming months. I'm sure my staff just missed me oh so much while I was gone for those couple of days. No dire 911 phone calls, thank goodness. So they must have behaved themselves. But very capable Mrs. Hurt in charge. But no, they were back here working like busy little bees, trying to get ready for as weird as this is going to sound, fiscal year end is just around the corner. End of the school year. So we are getting ready.
Like that happens every year.
And it seems to happen quicker and quicker. Oh, my goodness. So, and with that, if we can move on to the items for approval tonight. Item 11, we have some appropriations to our different clubs at the middle school. And this is just, they had, due to their fundraising that they did throughout the year, they had some extra cash on hand, and they would like to spend that down before the end of the school year.
Can I get a motion to approve item 11, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman. Could I have a second? Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. Moving on to board member communications. Uh, Don?
Just had a couple of things. I just wanted to share with the board and public that uh we have completed our uh performancy valves on the superintendent and the treasurer. Um, and I share that because I think the public needs to know that that is something that we as a board look at on an annual basis and uh one from our interactions and observations. But I think we also uh when we do that, have that opportunity to hear the people we talk to in the community over the course of the year and use those comments. So if anybody ever, you know, has any positive or negative, you know, share that with us as board members so that it, it allows us to uh put together uh a good quality performance eval and, and both of, both of our superintendent and treasurer both bared very well on those evaluations. So thank you. Um, couple uh small money items that I wanted to mention. One, I'm wearing a pin tonight. This is um OSBA has the kids pack and they use those dollars as a pack to support different uh issues that are going on. Um, uh, it, it helps when they're dealing with and working with uh our legislators. So if anybody ever is inclined to make a uh donation, whether it's 25, 50, a hundred dollars, um, you know, please think about that uh in particular us as, as board members. Um, also, uh, I was talking Mrs. Bloom uh just before the meeting and uh one of the things after our presentations from Learning and Liberty uh over the, the past couple of months uh made me think about, you know, where, what is their source of funding? And that might be something um, uh, you know, Mrs. Bloom or Denise, if you guys have input on that. But my point with bringing this up is, again, it's, it's an area that um if we as board members or uh community in general would like to make a contribution, um, you know, please do so. And I think, I think there's probably a link on the website on Learning and Liberty as to where they can uh send any contributions. I think it's a very uh worthwhile organization and, and important to our school system. And the final comment, and I try to look at something positive at each meeting, uh, just, I have not been real good yet about getting around to a lot of the, the sports activities. But uh, the other day, just driving, I happened to be driving through the backside of the high school and there was uh some track stuff going on, a baseball going on, tennis. It's just, it's just, we, we maintain and have such a nice, well thought out uh area for our sports teams. You know, obviously our football stadium is not attached, but the practice fields and all, um, I, I just think uh passport members have done a wonderful job, uh, other than Mr. Price with um uh help, helping give input into how those uh areas are developed. And, and again, Mr. Price is very involved in uh the different sports and, and helping our athletes and uh again, using his input and hearing what other people in the community. I think that helps filter down to those good positive decisions and, and our administration and uh obviously Mr. Anway um has been really good about looking at all those possibilities for our, for our athletics. So that's all I had.
Sarah?
Um, I, we kind of touched on Mrs. Moore, but Mrs. Moore is definitely one of the unsung heroes of, of our district and we are super uh fortunate to have her. Um, the Mr. Anway is here and I just wanted to publicly thank you um on behalf of a lot of very happy track moms um for the uh new concession stand um this season out there. Um, they are just able to, they're feeding a lot of kiddos out there. The, the middle school track meets bring a lot of uh athletes as well as the high school. Um, and to have a facility where they're not doing things that may, may not have been the safest uh in years past. Um, they are very appreciative. Um, and so are the athletes and their families. A lot of these meets, you know, like other sports start at 4:30. Um, and if you're coming from out of town or even you get off work locally and you gotta go hang out at the track for three hours because track meets are forever. Um, I mean, they have burgers and hot dogs and hot chocolate and all kinds of stuff. So they really appreciate uh the, the facility for them.
How much should we spend on that concession stand to, to build it and?
Well, it, well, it was a, it was a refurb. So we're able to, again, um, and I'm glad you said that, um, take something that maybe didn't serve its purpose where it used to be. And while it was not necessary at the height or at the football uh stadium anymore, at the track, it's like, ooh ah, we just built them a mansion. You know what I mean? Out there. And it really does help a lot of the kiddos. Um, Michelle Kaiser is leading the charge for the um, the concessions out there. She gets volunteers. She, you know, gets food and, and all of those things uh with Mrs. Moore's guidance and help to make sure that we're doing every, or she's doing everything um according to Hoyle. Uh, and also Mr. Bates, Coach Bates for um, you know, supporting that effort. Um, the Ross Hall of Fame banquet is, the athletic banquet is May 17th. Um, this is a pretty exciting class, as are all of them, but this is a, a pretty exciting um class of inductees. Um, I, at least one of the inductees, she used to be my babysitter when I was younger and I always looked after her, Pam Pitts, as um a role model um just for how to, how to carry yourself. Um, so um, this year's ceremony will be here or at the high school. Um, and if you need assistance, um, you can contact the athletic office um to get tickets. And I hope everybody's enjoying their spring break.
Laura?
So that track stand you're talking about, the road over there, I believe that's the one that was the fried bologna sandwiches at the stadium.
Oh, yeah.
It's down behind the Missouri side and uh.
Yeah.
Maybe we can whip some of those up one of these weeks. Because I am volunteering tomorrow to help and we're just gonna, I can't wait. I can't wait to be there and just visit with the community and see how much room is in there and see possibly what we can uh have come up here in the future. So we'll see. I didn't have much to say. I hope the staff is enjoying their week off and happy Easter and don't get into too much trouble out there. That's all I have to say.
Hey, Lori?
Well, thank Jaleel for the pleasure. She did really, really good. She's amazing. Um, the donations and the congratulations on the diploma. Um, I wish I could, I wish I was more prepared about the Learning and Liberty. I'd give you a lot more information. I have stuff at home. Maybe next time I can do that, but it's a really good program and it's, they do a lot of good things, a lot of um scholarships. They hand those out. They do the awards for the kids. Um, Sue Brechner and Tracy Lidle, they're both very involved in it. And it's just a really, really good. I really like the committee too. It's just a little, nice little committee we have.
And it's longstanding. It's been in the district.
It's been a long time.
I was gonna say, I remember that when I was in elementary school.
Yeah, they used to get a lot of funding from like Chrome Colonial Bank. They were saying that they don't get so much of that anymore. So any public donations is more than welcome. They could, I mean, they'd be more than happy. We're looking to do a fundraiser thing too. We're working on that now. So selling tickets soon. So, but that's all I have to say.
But Krogan participates a lot in our community in different activities.
Yeah, they, they don't give as much as they used to. I don't know. They just, it's, I don't know. But yeah, and I hope everybody's having a great time. I know my grandson's having a good time. He's off with his other grandma and they're in, on their way to Tennessee. So, but that's it.
Okay. Um, well, good luck to spring sports. They're in full swing now. First home track meet for high school is tomorrow. Um, if anybody wants to brave the cold to come on now, it's gonna be a little chilly, dress warm. It's gonna be windy. It usually is anyway, so. But there will be hot chocolate at the concession stand.
You got that, right?
Congratulations again on our art students going down to Columbus. I gotta give a shout out to Malaya Crowe. She happens to be an employee of the Cookie Lady. So she's one of the students that gets to go down. So um, congratulations to them and, and be strong advocates down there in Columbus for us. So um, other than that, um, happy Easter to everybody. Hope everyone is having a good spring break. For those staff and students that are someplace warm, I envy you bringing back with us or with you for sure. So. Um, so with that, um, before adjournment, I would like to make a motion to move into executive session under item N as a Nancy. Um, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? The only thing I would say to the public is there will be no uh action taken after our executive session. We will adjourn immediately. So there will be no business taken after the executive session. Um, roll call, please.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Motions approved. We are in executive session.